Please stand to salute the flag. All right, welcome everyone. Ms. Leshchak, can you call the role, please?
Okay, that was short. Thanks, appreciate it. John Haney?
Present.
Collins Henderson?
Present.
Jess O'Brien?
Not present.
Daniel Everett?
Present.
Mary Lescheck, present. Paul Hartzell? Not present. David Coin?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, first item, number one, MYNB LLC 301 West Trenton Avenue, Marsville, PA, TMP number thirteen dash zero three five dash zero seven four dash zero zero one. Conditional use change existing bank with drive-through to a restaurant with drive-through. Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Gazda. I'm with Lehigh Engineering Associates. We're the representative for Dunkin', for the client. This project is, as we mentioned, 301 West Trenton Avenue. This is a pretty straightforward project. There are no changes proposed to the site itself, with the exception of building signage, and there will be changes to the interior of the building, obviously, to convert from the bank to the Dunkin' Restaurant. The primary point of, or not point, but the primary use of the Dunkin' here is the drive-through itself. Dunkin' generally has more of their business through the drive-through than walk-in, so there will be limited seating in this restaurant, which we'll make sure we have enough seating to match with the available parking that's out there. So we're not going to require additional parking beyond that. So you really won't see any difference in the site. We're not changing the driveways, really just changing the signage and the Dunkin'. So, in looking at the conditions that have to be met for the conditional use, according to the ordinance, that the proposed change is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the chapter, this is the neighborhood commercial district, and we feel like Dunkin' fits in pretty well with the neighborhood. That the proposed special exception or conditional use will not substantially injure, detract from the use of the neighboring property, from the character of the neighborhood. Again, with this being a commercial use, Dunkin' fits that use. In fact, I don't believe we'd be here tonight if it wasn't with the drive-through, so that we would just have the Dunkin' itself. And then lastly, that all commercial, institutional, and industrial parking, loading, or access or service areas shall be adequately illuminated at night, and then such lighting and sign lighting shall be arranged to protect the highway and neighboring properties from any glare or hazardous interference of any kind. So, obviously, the parking lighting that's out there will remain. There will be just, obviously, the building lights and the lights for the signage specifically for that. So, we are aware we need to reach out to PennDOT. There are, for the HOP permits, obviously, the driveways are there, but changing the use, we could be increasing traffic somewhat, so we'll get those permits at the land development portion of that. But besides that, there's really not a whole lot to this one, so.
I assume this is going to be a change from the one down the street, it's going to move to here?
Yes.
Talking in the way?
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, I think that's a traffic improvement, just to start.
Sorry.
Okay. Is there any other changes with sign-ins that you may have to come in front of us, again, if you're going to change height with the signs at all?
No, everything remains the same.
Just going to retrofit it?
Yes, yeah. And we will tell Dunkin' Corporate that, make sure that we are not changing anything.
Okay.
Just as is, and we can put the sign Dunkin' on there.
Okay.
You know, I think so it's an illuminated sign there, so we might use the same, not might, but we will use the same thing.
Okay.
And one sign goes, smaller sign goes, on the building.
Okay.
Right, that's it. Nothing else. There's no change of use, nothing, zero.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any public comment? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion. Make a motion for conditional use. 301 West Trenton Avenue, Phelos Hills. TMP thirteen dash zero three five dash zero seven four dash zero zero one. Conditional use, yes. That's it. All right, second. Leshchak, can you pull the board, please?
John Haney?
Yes.
Colin Henderson?
Yes.
Daniel Everett?
Yes.
Mary Lescheck, yes. David Coin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, I'll move on to item number two. Pensbury High School, school redevelopment, six oh eight South Olds Boulevard, seven oh five Hood Boulevard, seventy-five Unity Drive. TMP numbers thirteen dash zero five zero one five, one seven five, thirteen zero one five, one seven five zero zero one, one thirteen zero one eight zero zero three, thirteen zero one eight zero zero three, zero zero one, thirteen zero one eight zero zero three, zero zero three, thirteen zero one eight zero zero three, zero zero five, thirteen zero one eight zero zero three, zero zero seven, thirteen zero one eight zero two two, and thirteen zero one eight zero two five. Preliminary final, construct a new high school, demolish the East and West High School, Village Park, most program building, construct a facility, an administrative office, construct new driveways, parking lots, athletic fields, project we phased to construct a new high school while the existing schools are in operation.
Mr. Haney, thank you very much. Planning Commission members, good evening. Kelly McGowan, representing Pensbury School District, this evening on the high school redevelopment project. The project has been in front of this planning commission multiple times, including at sketch plan and with progress reports since. With me this evening is Terry DeGroot, project engineer, Dave Horner, project traffic engineer, Mr. Tom Smith, Dr. Tom Smith, the superintendent of schools, as well as multiple school board representatives and district representatives. We are happy to be here this evening. We will be requesting this evening preliminary recommendation for preliminary final land development approval based upon the reviews that we've received from the township professionals. So, Mr. Haney, I know you've seen this plan multiple times. We have the Jones Engineer Review Letter, BCPC Review Letter, Remington Vernick Review Letter, and a waiver letter. We're happy to proceed as the planning commission desires, I think probably one efficient way to do it, is just to go through Joe's letter and take you through his comments. I can tell you that they are, all will comply, comments.
Can we take a step back and go through the recommendations that were made to the updated drawings since last time we were here?
Absolutely. So, I guess to start, the recommendations are all positive. We have, since we've been here last, made actually, as you're looking at the plan, very few changes that change the geometry of the plan, the access points, and those items. One thing that we do want to bring to the planning commission's attention is Hood Boulevard. That is the bottom of your plan, the South Drive. The primary change we made there is what you can see at the right-hand side of the plan. That is the Bus Depot Bus Parking Lot, right? The driveway that you see there, next to the Bus Depot Parking Lot, and in between, thank you very much, and in between the other is the existing driveway. There was previous, a driveway for buses only, leading into that bus parking lot. That driveway point has been eliminated. It's been eliminated because as you move to the left across the plan, you'll see an emergency access point has been added to that location on Hood Boulevard. That will be an emergency access only. It will be controlled. It will not be accessible to the public or to the district, but it was a specific request of the township fire marshal. It does lead directly to that rear driveway that you see that accesses the rear portion of the high school building. That is primarily a loading driveway and a rear access driveway. So in order to accommodate that, we had to change the access points on Hood.
Right, and that will be where the hydrants are on the street?
That's correct. We have coordinated with the township fire marshal, including on the, even so far as the building and where those access points are located.
Yeah, that was one of my concerns, to make sure that we have the access where the hydrant can be dropped in. Perfect.
Yep. So that's the primary change. Otherwise, we have previously advised of our submission to PennDOT for that access point down there on Hood. That is the only PennDOT road. That is in process. Scoping went well on that. All of the other driveways are township access points. They have not changed.
Okay.
So that's on that point. Our landscaping, you'll see, we're showing you a rendered plan here. We've shown some of our buffering. We've shown some of our tree replacement. The other change you'll note is that we actually eliminated the waiver from the tree survey, and we completed that tree survey. As a result of completing the tree survey, we were able to tighten up our landscaping plan. We actually changed the location of some, not significantly, but of some of those pathways that you see out there, to avoid some tree disturbance, which is also a benefit to the plan. But otherwise, there is no change there, and all of our landscaping is, will comply items. The high school building remains as we have originally, had originally proposed it on the sketch plan. The footprint is just under 300,000 square feet. You can see that in brown to the bottom, to the southeast corner of the property. Parking remains compliant. The waivers that we will note for the planning commission all deal with parking lot configuration as it relates to some of those plantings and some of those islands that you can see reflected there, but otherwise, the parking is compliant. And, Mr. Haney, I'd love to tell you that, you know, take you through a lot of other changes, but as I said, we've really moved through the review process, and everything is fairly well situated, exactly as the planning commission saw before.
Okay. Any other questions on the updates before we move on to the waiver request?
Okay, thank you. So I'll direct you to an October 31st waiver letter that was prepared by Mr. DeGroot, Terraform Engineering. And you'll note, this waiver letter has seven requests, the first of which is one that you're used to seeing, and that is to allow the concurrent preliminary and final plan approval. The second is a new waiver. This actually came up as a result of the Bucks County Planning Commission letter. There's a requirement, there's, to have 15 feet of open space between the parking lots and the buildings. This waiver only relates to that bus maintenance area that I previously showed you on the, down at Hood Boulevard. Because of the nature and the use of that area, the parking, and as you can see, the pavement, is proposed right up to the building. So that is a technical waiver. Waiver number three is also, as I previously alluded to, and this is the waiver that requires 20 parking spaces in a row to have an island before the next 20 parking spaces in a row. What you can see with this configuration is that the parking islands are actually situated horizontally, and that is actually reflective of a situation that results in more planting area than having them put vertically within those parking spaces. Number four is a waiver, and it's a technical waiver.
Excuse me. Could you just read the numbers out for the waivers?
So you can follow? Absolutely. So number one was section 191 dash 18.1. Waiver number two is section 191 thirty-seven B. Waiver number three is section 191.
Wait, he, thirty-seven, you said this, 191 thirty-seven G?
Thirty-seven B is number two. B as in boy.
Mr. Henderson, that wasn't in our review letter because we didn't interpret that section that way. I think Ms. McGowan mentioned that the Bucks County Planning Commission identified that, and I think they're picking up on that.
Thank you, Joe.
You can continue. Sorry, ma'am.
No, that's okay. I want to make sure it's clear. Then, the one that I just referenced...
Sorry, with all the, with all the different ones?
Trust me, I get it. And even the, so we're going to run into a string of numbers that are similar, too, sections that are similar. If we can block these together, these are those parking lot waivers. And, and there's, there's two of them. So the one that I just read is 191 thirty-seven G1, right? And then the waiver number four, as I'll refer to it, is section 191 thirty-seven G3. So, as I just mentioned, the technical wording of that section is that the supervisors have the option to require 10-foot wide islands between double-loaded rows of parking with a sidewalk, shade tree, and shade trees and lighting. So, again, this is a bit related to the waiver that I just described, which is to permit those parking islands to be located in a horizontal manner, as you can see, on those, on both of those large parking lots. This is really a partial waiver, because we do show planting in those islands. We don't technically show them as they can be required in those 10-foot islands. And the sidewalk is not, again, throughout, we do have sidewalk as required by ADA and all of those specific locations as required. So again, that's a bit of a technical partial waiver there. Number five, and this is new as well, that section is 191 forty-eight D. This was also brought up by the Bucks County Planning Commission. Again, we think it's, it's technical. There's a requirement that trees be no closer than 30 feet from the intersection, and that is as a clear sight triangle requirement. So what we've done there is to, and is to explain that A, it only applies to the drip line, and to ensure that the clear sight triangle is met at least 10 feet off the ground.
Real quick, Mr. Jones, for the Bucks County recommendations, is that something that we have to put into ours and vote on?
It is not, but we actually have that one in our letter as well.
Okay, I'd say in general.
That waiver. And just, is 191 forty-four D no longer applicable? Grading within five feet of the property line?
That is still applicable.
Yeah, I think you did mention that one.
Yes. That's actually, I have it out of order. That's actually the last one on my list.
Sorry, what was the last number you read off? I'm just between all the different things.
No, no problem at all. The last one was the section 191 forty-eight D, and that applies to the one driveway on Hood where there's a tree located within that distance of the intersection. And then the next one is a waiver insofar as it's a request to waive the requirement of actually your stormwater management ordinance. So that is section 187 thirteen C4. This is a technical requirement. There's a minimum freeboard requirement of one foot in all inlets. There are a few, again, it's a partial waiver. There are only a few inlets that this applies to, and the stormwater management plan has been reviewed by the township engineer. The NPDES stormwater plans are also working their way through DEP. They have been through a technical review as well. So this is a waiver from a technical requirement of the township ordinance.
What was that number again?
And that one is 187 thirteen C4. Okay. And then the last one is that waiver that Joe just referenced, and that is subdivision ordinance, section 191 forty-four D, which requires all grading to be a minimum of five feet from the property line. This does not apply to all property lines, but it does apply to certain locations to allow for the grading for sidewalks, driveways, and at one point on the northern side of the site due to existing site conditions. That's also one that, that you're likely used to seeing. So for a development of this size, the waivers are minimal. We have, as I mentioned before, worked through all of the other comments and all of the other requirements of the, both the zoning ordinance and the subdivision and land development ordinance.
Can I just go over the waiver question, the waivers you are requesting?
Absolutely.
Just so we're on the same page here?
Please.
All right, so you want, 191 eighteen, one?
Yep.
191 thirty-one G1, and one, sorry, 191 thirty-seven G1, and 191 thirty-seven G3?
Yep.
191 forty-four D?
Yep.
191 forty-eight D?
Yep.
What, 187 thirteen C4?
Yep.
And? And that's it, because the other, we don't have to do the Bucks County Planning Commission one?
You do not have to follow their recommendation if the township...
The 191 thirty-seven B, we don't have to do that. It's, yes.
Yeah, that was the section that was picked up, again, by the Bucks County Planning Commission. That's up to the township interpretation.
All right. But so is there, is everything else?
No, that covers all of the waivers that we're requesting.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I got a question. So, my bad, sorry. Let's see. Actually, you addressed that. It was, so that, that minimum of five feet from the property line, like the, for the sloping, that's for like the water retention basin and stuff like that, right? Correct?
So that's for grading. It's where, it's, yeah, it's for grading. It's not necessarily grading associated with stormwater. Some of it is required for sidewalk installation, driveway installation, those types of items that tend to take you closer to the property line. Then, and again, that's a technical requirement in order to manage the grading process.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Jones, do you have any concerns with anything presented or any exemptions?
No, and I'll just add that typically, when they grade within five feet of the property line, we would ask at a minimum for temporary construction easements. But in this case, I think we would manage that under construction. There's fences that are surrounding most of these properties, so it's going to be pretty hard for them to disturb private property, even though they might be within that five-feet buffer.
Okay. This time, I'll take public comment. I know there's going to be some. I please ask that you be respectful in verbiage and language, and that we keep it to a five-minute minimum, please. Name and where you're from, please, too. Understand that people are from outside Falls Township as well, but the school district.
Hi, Jennifer Metzger, Falls Township. Thank you for letting me ask a couple of questions. I didn't expect that. So about 200 feet off of Hood Boulevard, and I don't know the exact footage, but the engineer might. There are water drains that I guess carry the water across the field from east to closer to the PHS West Building before they actually turn to go down towards the lake. Lake Carolyn is our overflow, right, for Pensbury? What is the plan for those drains right now? I assume they're just carrying water. I don't think they're sewer drains. They didn't look like it in video. Do I just keep asking the four questions that I have, or wait for?
You can wait for an answer. Do you have any input on that?
You're talking about existing storm drains within the complex, Ms. Metzger?
Yeah, because there's the, the water that's being carried right now is, through the building, basically.
Yeah, that's, it is not going through the building. There is an existing 36-inch storm line that crosses the site just north of the proposed building and south of the parking lot to the north of that building. That pipe will be maintained throughout, through the site.
Okay, so that's, that's going to stay?
Can you just, Jennifer? Jennifer, can you just speak into the microphone if you don't mind?
Okay, so my understanding is, is he's saying it's going to stay where it is right now, and it's not going to encroach inside the building? It would literally be under that sidewalk between the building and the parking lot?
Correct. It goes along the north side of the bus maintenance area, across the eastern parking lot, across the front of the school, and south of the stadium, and then between the school and the northern parking lot, and then over to Queen Anne. So that, that existing pipe, that will remain.
How far is that existing pipe from Hood Boulevard?
That is several hundred feet away from Hood Boulevard.
So it's not 200, it's 400 feet?
At least.
And then, for the back road that's covering over the waterway, so if you're looking at Hanford, where you see the houses? Right behind the stadium?
Yes.
So that road right now, they actually have it, in February 2024 drawings, it showed it as the prom route, right? So that road right now is not existing. Right now, that's actually a waterway that's carrying, it's kind of like an open drain, that's carrying water down into piping that occurs where the current PHS West parking lot is. So that road is over top of that. Is that going to be one of the eight that goes below ground and gets covered for roadway? Or is that going to be moved?
Okay, that is going to be moved. There are two ponds out there right now that we're putting, I believe, for the stadium improvements. improvements at one point in time, it was a while ago. But those will be removed, and the other detention basins, you can see them with the mustard-colored yellow and, you know, speckled green plantings. Combination of those basins, and there's other basins underground that don't show up on this rendering. They have been designed to address the removal of the basins north of the stadium.
So you're going to remove it, but is one of the underground basins going to pick up the water that's there right now?
A combination of the underground basins and the above-ground basins. Primarily the basin along South Olds, between the entrance and exit driveways from South Olds.
And then for the bus turn-in, there, in prior plans, there were actually, I'm not sure what that first, all the way up on South Olds there, I'm not sure what that first one is for now that's been added. On South Olds, originally, there were two entrances in this middle road pathway that looked like there was one for the buses that would go into this furthest parking lot, and then one for the cars that would go in. Now it looks like that's been combined, and the road has been moved onto South Queen Anne, where Bristol Township is, is that right?
None of that has changed. This is all, this is virtually the same as we had in the sketch plan. So, let me, here we go.
Thank you.
That is the, yeah, that is the entrance driveway for the cars, not for buses, and this is the exit driveway for the cars on the site. The buses have their own driveway. Okay, they would come in here, park there, and then go out here. Now, this is for the buses that are delivering kids to the school. Of course, we also have a bus yard over here. Those buses will enter in from the signalized intersection at Hood Boulevard. And at that intersection, we are proposing a right-turn deceleration lane to help alleviate traffic congestion there. And I'll also add, and this was mentioned before, but we are now proposing to eliminate the eastern unsignalized driveway entrance to allow a second driveway to be put on there for the emergency access.
Do you know about where that's going to end up on Hood Boulevard? It looks like that's going to be...
It's where, it's where the hydrant is. I think it's like, actually, I'll give you an actual address.
That's okay. Hydrant.
Yeah, there is, at the bus access driveway here, there is a hydrant just to the left of that access road, and we're proposing hydrants around the entire building, on the fire access road, as well as in the front and east and west sides of the building. So there will be a hydrant within 300 feet around the entire building.
Yeah, we'd just like to have the one off the street as well for an additional...
Yeah, we have, we have several.
And that's in front of 616 Hood, it looks like, for existing...
We also, at the request of the fire chief or fire marshal, we added a remote fire department connection, which is kind of right at the corner of the parking lot here. Instead of having that connection on the building, as is often the case, we put a remote connection in there with a hydrant next to that for the pumper connection.
My other question was whether or not the Bristol Township, so the homes that are on South Queen Anne are actually Bristol Township there on the side, have they been notified at all about any of this? Because these two entrances, right now, they're very quiet entrances, right? You have a little bit of parking that's happening in the gravel, and then those, that bus entrance, you know, in and out, is not extremely busy. But now you're saying it's going to be 100% of the time. So has, have the records actually been shared with Bristol Township yet, or they're still working on it?
So we submitted the plans to Bristol Township. We were hoping to get feedback from them prior to tonight's meeting, but we have not received that yet. Currently, in Bristol Township, the corner, there's two pieces in Bristol. There's kind of a triangular portion at the corner of Queen Anne and Hood, and then another piece near the bus entrance driveway. It's very, very strange, the way Bristol kind of sneaks over like that, but it is what it is. So we are eliminating that gravel parking lot, which I would think that would be an improvement for those neighbors. But we are, we do have a driveway going into the bus parking lot, and that will be used by buses, and of course, during events, that will be open to the general public as well.
So you know we have a problem with standing water in this area. There's lactus sporosus and other issues. So you're saying that you think it would be better to take out the gravel parking lot and put in above-ground basins, but how are you going to keep that water moving so that it doesn't become stagnant, standing, mosquito, all the things we have around here?
Yeah, those basins drain at the end of the storm. There is a small portion of the basin, you can see it in blue a little bit there, where about six inches of water would be standing in vegetation. That helps with the water quality. But those basins are designed to drain. It's not a wet pond.
Okay, last question. So Lake Carolyn is our overflow, right? So right now, with the water that you're going to try to manage on the grounds, are we hoping that Lake Carolyn will no longer be cresting and consistently overflowing? Or is that something that you're going to have to go back to the Bucks County Preserve and ask them to dredge it again?
Well, I can't speak for Lake Carolyn, but I can say that we are making significant reductions in stormwater coming off of this site. I mean, for the, there is a small pond in front of the West High School on South Olds Boulevard. It was installed, I believe, in 96, and those two ponds were referred to before behind the stadium. Other than that, the site flows through undetained. And we have all the ponds you see on the plan, the above-ground ponds, and we have three or four, one, two, three, five, six underground ponds that you can't see on this rendering to detain that flow. So we're going to, we're going to cut those flows down by 50%, and that's a lot, and this is a big piece of property. But I can't say that we're going to save Lake Carolyn. I don't, I don't know anything about that.
That's your overflow. So let me ask you, you just made the comment, five above, six below. Was it six below or eight below ground basins?
It is, let me count them here. One, two...
You can see the five above, I agree.
Yeah, I'm not counting, I'm not counting, one, two, three, four, five, six, six below-ground basins. And there's also basins underneath the stadium and the existing turf field, but that is not part of this project. That was previously approved.
No, because those basins are for the turf.
Correct.
And they're also extremely slow. They're not for actual full water storage or for stormwater.
Well, they are, but in any case, those are previously approved, but they do exist on the site.
So are you dealing with the monitor then? Because remember, there was a point where we were supposed to have a water meter that was going to be added for the stadium and the concessions, and then it was decided that that would be taken care of when the new pool is put in. So where is that water meter going to be? Because right now, nobody's washing down those turf fields as originally agreed, which is what those basins were for. So you've added another question?
Well, there is no connection between washing the fields and the basin, but the new water meter is going to be located right here off of Queen Anne. Currently, the water meter is situated down here off of Hood.
So you're not adding the additional water meter that was originally discussed? It was found to be a problem in October.
We are putting in a brand-new water meter for the site. The water meter that's out there is very old and dated. It does need to be replaced, and we are doing that.
So the second meter is not going to be installed?
We're installing one new meter.
Thank you.
Welcome. Anyone else? All right, with that, entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Sorry, I do want to say one thing. Sorry. Just two seconds for me. To go back to the point where we spoke to Bristol Township, my personal opinion, and this is mine alone, is that it's hard for me to recommend a preliminary and final with the fact that Bristol hasn't even seen it yet, and they're not going to see it till 2026. They are a small part of this, but if something happens on their end, I'd feel more comfortable from my position that they do a preliminary. But that's just my two cents. All in all, I just, this has been a journey, and I think most of the questions were answered and there is concerns, and just for the Planning Commission's perspective, is like, we're not talking to what the school's going to be, it's where it's going to be put on. So I appreciate the comment from the community, and I hope we heard a lot from it with some suggestions and things were taken care of. I know we're not all going to win in this, but just thank you for that. So with that, entertain a motion.
Do you want me to do it, or do you want to do it?
You good with that? Make a motion.
All right, make a motion, preliminary for Pensbury High School redevelopment, excuse me, 608 South Olds Boulevard, 705 Hood Boulevard, 75 Unity Drive, Zone Institutional District, with the waivers, 191-37G1, 191-37G3, 191-44D, 191-48D, 187-13C4. In accordance to the Fire Marshal's letter, Bucks County Planning Commission, Remington Vernick Engineering Letter, and the Jones Engineering Letters.
I'll second that.
Ms. Leschuck, please pull the board. I'm sorry. Oh, no, I got it, I got it, I got it. Colin, could you pull the board, please? All right. Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Ms. Leschuck?
Yes.
Amiash and Mr. Haney?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Planning Commission members.
All right, item number three, minutes from October 28th, 2025. I make a motion that we accept the minutes as printed.
Second.
Second. So moved.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to adjourn.
So moved, yes.
Thank you, everybody.